I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Montague County Board of Education. The date is October 12th, 5:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Want you, both of you, want you to lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Thank you Hazel, that was a perfect start. Okay, first up we have delegations. Read the rules and regulations. Speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect to the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by your comments. While it is not our intent to stifle public comment, speakers should be aware that if your statements violate rights of others, under the law of defamation or invasion of privacy, you may be held legally responsible. If you are unsure of the legal ramifications of what you are about to say, we urge you to consult with your legal advisor. Montague County Schools Board Policy 0169. Public participation in board meetings states that you may speak for no more than five minutes if there are 12 or fewer delegations. After 12 delegations, the amount of time you may speak will be determined by taking the number of delegations and dividing it by 60 minutes. Public comment is not a time for open dialogue among the board members and the speaker. The board members will not answer questions posed to them from a speaker or comment on a speaker's concerns. In short, there will be no verbal interaction from the board members during or after the speaker's comments. Okay, first up, we have Catherine Hazel and JP Pine. And it's about an unsafe bus stop.
Thank you Hazel.
Thank you. I got it, I got it. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, if you'll see the time is on the screen.
Start? Yeah, go ahead. Thank you very much. I am speaking today about an unsafe and inadequate bus stop on the corner of Rotary and University. This is on University as you're leaving Star City going towards Morgantown just before you get to Kroger and Black Bear. This is the singular bus stop that is there to service the neighborhood behind Creps Park. There are about 20 kids who go to this bus stop and it is unsafe. There is no safe space to wait for, on this, at this bus stop. It is on a main thoroughfare of Morgantown. The cars are going an average of 44.1 miles per hour. Right past it, there is no gap between the sidewalk and the street. And there's a car going about every 5.5 seconds. It is to note that these measurements were taken of June of this year. We all know with WVU in session, we can assume that these cars will be going faster and more frequently. I have addressed these concerns multiple times with the Transportation Department over the years and have gotten some disappointing responses. One of the responses I have gotten is that if I am concerned about people speeding, as this street is technically a 25 mile per hour, that I should be calling the cops. Because the cars are going much faster than 25 miles per hour, it brings this bus stop out of compliance with the West Virginia Board of Education Policy 4336 in the matter of sight distance to the bus stop. I have also been told by the Transportation Department that this has never been a problem before. I believe that the Transportation Department, the Transportation Department relies on historical routes instead of looking at the needs of a neighborhood. This neighborhood previously did not need the same amount of bus transportation because previously there was the old Suncrest Primary School, which the students could walk to. Additionally, with the new Suncrest Middle School, there's going to be more demand on this, on this bus stop as more kids need to actually use the bus and are not able to walk to their schools anymore. Finally, the changing demographics of the neighborhood means that there's a lot of young families. I'm projecting about 40 kids will need this bus stop within the next five years. Talking to the, to the Transportation Department, for the 2024-2025 school year, we were able to get the bus stop moved to the confluence of Elmhurst, Laurel and Fairlawn. If you look on the paper that I handed out on the back, it's where the purple square is. It's about three blocks away. This bus stop was much safer for the kids. It took advantage of the already in place traffic calming measures, a much bigger sidewalk and a big grassy area for, for students and parents to safely wait. However, despite me calling and writing to the Transportation Department several times and for Summer Avalanche this year, this, they did not allow for this bus stop. They only had the bus stop on the corner of Rotary and University. Additionally, for 2025-2026, they have not put this new bus stop that we were able to use last year on the route either. So we are still working and trying to come up with a better solution. I am asking for this to be resolved once and for all, to ban bus stops along University between Mulberry and Laurel as there's no safe space for the kids and the cars go way too fast. I suggest moving the bus stop to where it is now, where we had it last year on the confluence of Laurel, Fairlawn and Elmhurst and, and strongly urge that more bus stops be considered for the neighborhood, for the dozens of kids that will use it. Now I have a quick demonstration for how busy and unsafe this bus stop is. This red carpet up here represents about a quarter of the bus stop's size. With 20 kids plus their parents, we would need about six people to be able to stand there. So children, do you want to go on up? Can I get four volunteers? Please, one, two, yes, please. Yeah, another person, one more. Perfect. You could all stand on that red carpet. Thank you very much. Yeah, one more, one more. Yep, one more. And this is just the, this would just, just be the children. I just picked up my daughter's cello, which I should have brought as well because that's about another person, along with backpacks. And University is right there. If you look at this bus stop, this picture on the back, you can see how close that child is and that is less than half the number of kids that are actually there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job on the timing too. Next up is Megan McCullough. Hello Meg.
Hello. I'll be brief. We, after the last meeting that we had, we made a change.org petition to amend the fundraising policy of 6605 to allow for crowdfunding for the fun run. And that policy has received 668 signatures. I have the list I printed out that has everyone who signed, where they're from, that I'll leave over there if anyone wants to see. And I just wanted to read a couple of the comments that were left by people that signed. Emily Mallon from Morgantown said, "This platform allows local schools to run a successful and exciting fundraiser. The kids love it and families and friends appreciate donating to something active that the kids work for. I have received nothing but compliments from local and out-of-state families and friends who have supported this fundraiser." Tammy Joe Brown, also from Morgantown, said, "This platform gives our school the chance to run a successful and exciting fundraiser and we've truly felt the impact. The kids absolutely love being part of something active and fun and families and friends appreciate supporting a cause where the students are truly involved and working hard. I've received nothing but kind words and compliments from both local and out-of-state supporters. It's more than just a fundraiser. It's a way for our community to come together and uplift our students in such a positive way." So there's some more on here if you want to read them and I'll leave the list over here of people who signed.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have Kristin Camacho.
Hi, I am Kristin Camacho and I am from Skyview Elementary PTO. Here to talk to you about the program that we use for our dance-a-thon and this year we're changing it a little bit to a game-a-thon. We use a program called Get Movin' Fund Hub and this program is designed by former PTO members. And the cool thing about this program is it gives all of our families an option to do online. Last year we only, this past school year, we had 53% of our students register online. There's no penalty if they decide not to choose online. This company also is very supportive in asking for cash or check donations. Another plus, we are able to reach families and communities well beyond West Virginia. We had over 25 states that have donated, we had Hawaii, Alaska. The kids loved seeing donations come in from there. We also had donations from Spain and Canada and the outer, was the United States minor outlying islands, which I had to look up to see where they were. And we keep 100% of cash and check donations and we have been able to keep 98% of all of our online donations. The only donations, the only part of the online fees we end up paying are what families choose not to pay. They can choose to pay the fee or they can un-click the box and they don't have to pay the fee, which, and then we just pick up the end cost on that, which you will see was not very high for either year. Let's see. This fundraiser, we've only run this fundraiser for two years. And in this two years, we've been able to pay for all field trip admission, which is very important for the diverse nature of our school system. And field trips are just getting more expensive, more expensive, more expensive. We are also able to supply charter buses for our out-of-state field trips. Last year, the cost for field trips and charter buses was almost $10,000. And that's an opportunity our students aren't going to be able to get, many of them aren't going to be able to afford if we are not able to continue in the large range of fundraising. We also are able to host many family events throughout the year. We have a holiday shop for our kids to come and shop for family members, which we provide all items for that. We provide refreshments for our celebrations, for our kids, for teachers. All students are gifted a water bottle for Field Day. We spoil our staff and our teachers because we know they are the most important thing to keep our schools going. We provide meals, we provide monthly snacks. We have a monthly snack cart that goes around. And then we've also started this past year, an attendance snack. We call it the Whoop Whoop Cart and the kids love it when we come around. And now we've been doing the highest grade level for attendance each trimester and we'll probably do that a little more often this year, gets to come to their student Whoop Whoop Cart and get a special prize off of that. And we know at Skyview that not all of our kids are going to be able to participate in this fundraiser and that's okay. We don't penalize anybody for not being able to participate. We also try to keep our individual goal very low. It's only $25 per student for an individual goal. And that is because it can be very over, over cumbersome if you look at something and they want you to bring in $200 or whatever. So we keep it at $25. We do have individual incentives, but we also do class incentives and we do grade level incentives. So somebody is getting an incentive at some point. And in the day of, there's no penalty for not having participated, like bringing financial means. Everybody is still out there dancing their hearts out, running around, taking pictures on the photo booth, doing, and just having a good time celebrating and knowing we're going to be able to do a lot for our students and our teachers and staff because of the success of this fundraiser. So in that handout, I kind of did a more in-depth overview, showed you what we spent all of our money on last year and then gave the handouts that we sent out after both previous fund runs. Well, no, dance-a-thons. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have the excess levy update. And you want to introduce Jason or?
Jason Long from Dinsmore and Shoal is here. Some of you may be familiar with Jason. He does a lot of work with Montague County Schools. We asked Jason to come in and, and to give the board kind of a, a quick snapshot of the do's and the don'ts that go along with the promotion of the excess levy for you, the, the board members. And he may mention some about the administrative staff as well. But this is mainly so that you have an understanding of what you can do and what you can't do in relation to marketing the excess levy that will take place at Election Day in May. So, Jason?
Thank you sir.
You're welcome.
You might want to put back up the five minutes. Keep that up there. And if you folks got to walk out, I get it, you did the delegations. It's, it's important because we want you to support any excess levy, of course. But yeah, I don't want to spend a whole lot of overkill and time on kind of the do's and don'ts, but I do think it is important for board members to understand their do's and don'ts. I think it's important for the superintendent, who has a different position role, to understand his do's and don'ts, what it is, you know, our classroom teachers, our service personnel, what resources we can utilize. And it's not uncommon to, to do this little topic for 10 or 15 minutes when I look back and think during election time, it's not uncommon for our boards to meet and kind of talk. You folks appear that you're going to have an excess levy in the primary election in May. I mean, that's pretty exciting. I think it's a county that's had an excess levy. At least I thought since 1973. I may be wrong on that. But we all understand the importance of an excess levy. You know, there's a reason Mon County is always in the top of education throughout the state. When I look at counties who are successful and I love all the school systems I've worked with, but Mon County, my Putnam County, my Ohio County, you folks are always in that same category. And you're in that same category for a number of reasons, but one of those truly probably is an excess levy. But each of you have some materials there in front of you and I think it'd just be helpful if we go through those in terms of understanding the do's and don'ts. In those materials also, I've included ethics opinion decisions at the end. So when you get bored at night, you can also read those that kind of summarize what we're going to talk about. talk about briefly. But you, as board members, and bullet point one there is, outside of your board meetings, on your own time, using your own resources, you can speak on behalf of the levy and advocate for the levy. You can do in opposition to it, but I'd probably prefer that you don't. So again, if you've got to go, Mr. Smith, the Lion Club's asked you to come out, or the Rotary, or whomever it may be during that excess levy time, you're going out with your pom-poms, you're cheering on that excess levy to these various groups, organizations, and that's totally permissible.
Should I take my black pom-poms?
You can take wherever you need to, any of them. You take those things, and again, you're going to cheer and be an advocate for them. Because, let's be candid, I mean, each year it gets more and more difficult, and I get it, you know, different reasons and different things kind of cause levies to either not be successful, run on thin margins. But again, Mon County, you're different, you've got great community and support. Also, I want to be clear, during your board meetings, you board members can speak in favor of the levy. Now, I can't have you hold a special levy for this whole, special meeting for this whole purpose, to speak about and advocate for the levy. But in the coming months, if there's each board agenda, there happens to be an agenda item, along with a number of other agenda items, like you've got tonight, that may be levy update, levy discussion, there's an opportunity for you at that point to, again, give and discuss favoritism towards the levy. But again, it would be inappropriate and misuse of taxpayer funds, and that's what we're dealing with here, right? We're dealing with taxpayer funds, we recognize that, we want to do the right thing, be good stewards of it, and not misuse and abuse it. In terms of what resources board members can utilize, in terms of producing materials to support the levy, they go through some examples there. A board member may not create an advertisement to be paid for using school funds to advocate for the levy. Again, you know, that's often common sense, but you cannot utilize public funds to advocate for passage of the levy. We'll talk about shortly what funds you can utilize and how you can not advocate but give factual information. To the extent a board, a board member may not use the school's copiers to produce materials, the board member wants to distribute in favor, unless other groups who are in opposition are given that same access. But candidly, in my world and the other counties that have an excess levy, we're not utilizing any of our equipment either for or against, but instead just factual. Yes, or Miss Carrion?
Question on that. If Sean goes to the local Rotary Club or whatever, and he wants information about the levy pays for this or whatever, is that appropriate to have the staff?
Right.
It's just for informational purposes?
Right, so probably what your staff will do, and what most counties will do, is, is there will be factual information produced. That factual information often finds itself on the webpage, and it really has to be factual-based. And by that means, some of the verbiage that we'll talk about is, it can't say, "improve services, better programs," or this school. It's really got to be factual-based in terms of, what are the dollars? What's the impacts tax base? What does that levy go towards? And of course, when you put together your levy call, it tells you specifically what those dollars go for. So there's no doubt, I bet you your CSBO will put together factual information along with the superintendent for your community and everyone to see, and that's appropriate.
Like the last meeting, our consent agenda, I just made a note to the public of, this is what all, I mean, we're approving that, and this is what it pays for. So those types of, that would be appropriate because that's exactly what it pays for.
Right, they're factual, black and white, I mean, we know in terms of what it goes for. Of course, we recognize, we can't utilize kind of our staff's time to create materials in terms of things that would be pro-levy, again, that doesn't go towards, Ms. Carrion may be working on something that, again, is factual. It's not uncommon for a board to put together that factual information, say, "Hey, let's get a second set of eyes here, let's truly make sure we're being good stewards," because it's recognized there's a percentage that aren't in favor and a percentage in favor, and we respect both, and we want to make sure that we're doing it the right way. So I might spend 20 minutes looking at the PowerPoint and the materials to say, "Yeah, on my end, from outside the community, that's clearly factual." And then when we talk about the superintendent's role, and the superintendent's served in this capacity for a number of years, and other counties as well, is, you know, he can be an advocate as well for that excess levy. Can't utilize, of course, you know, copiers, our resources, and our dollars for anything that relate to attempting to persuade one way or the other. But again, you know, the superintendent's role in that capacity, the Ethics Commission has said, "May advocate for passage of the levy in his or her official capacity, including but not limited to while attending public meetings," which is an uncommon. You'll be out there pounding the pavement, along with probably these folks in here, kind of spreading that message. In terms of, you know, if you look at the superintendent's options and what he or she may do, school employees, really the same thing. I mean, there's Ethics Commission's decisions, where in the past, counties have kind of run afoul, where the superintendent said, "Hey, you all take the afternoon off, go spread the good word of the levy." Well, you know, that kind of was indicated, no, you can't do that. And it's all learning experience, but at this point, we've all learned fairly well in terms of what it is we can and can't do. In terms of what those school resources, though, are, if you look on that second page, this is really your guiding point, when it says "school resources," we've got guidance from the Secretary of State's office, we've got state board policies, we've got documents from the Ethics Commission. And again, it goes straight to factual. I go back to, we can't talk about improved services, better programs, more competitive salaries, those are all kind of, again, I was a social studies teacher, those are all adjectives, I believe, right? Am I right on that? So we have to stay away from that sort of language in terms of how we advocate for it. In terms of how we do advocate for it, on that third page, when you go down to the bottom, those are some factual informations. It's not all-inclusive, but that's information that the State Department issues when we're advocating for, or giving information on the excess levy or school bond. Two things that are different, of course. But again, when we talk about what that factual information is, if I were to see what it is that the Central Office puts together, and you all kind of go out and discuss, amount of the funds to be raised, purpose of those funds to be used, the effect on the property taxes, one of the things that's important there, at the bottom, see where it says, "We urge you to vote on this issue." Information can go out to our students. What's it have to be?
Factual.
And even on that example, is, is, "We urge you to vote on the issue." I can't put in there, "We urge you to vote in favor of this issue." So it's not uncommon for that information to go out to our students in some sort of simplicity, one factual sheet information to our parents to recognize the importance of getting out and voting on the levy, whether for or against, again, just to be informational, knowledge-based. Something that a lot of counties don't do, and some counties do, and in particular in this county, you always have good groups that go out and advocate for it, our different organizations, and our employee associations, and those entities. One of the things I would indicate on that last page, if there are committees that are put together, they are required to kind of get some documentation from the Secretary of State's page, I just copied and pasted one, and that was from Mercer County. Again, that was just kind of a grassroots committee, and let's say grassroots committees want to get together, to be able to accept dollars, to be able to buy the signs, to do advertising for the levy that's more than just factual-based, there's some small little steps that they're generally supposed to go through, fill out a form, that form's included in these materials, it's not that difficult. But again, it is something that's expected from the Secretary of State's webpage, from our committees, who are in favor of or in opposition to it, taking those additional Any questions, concerns, you're worried about, any hiccups or otherwise? Because as you recognize, obviously, this has been a topic that's been addressed by several entities, because we have had people misstep in counties throughout the years, and not intentionally, though, it just unintentionally, you know, kind of stepped across the line a little bit further than what they should have, and rightfully so. It's addressed by those entities that give us a little bit more guidance.
I think, I think you hit it right on the head. And then if we have any questions, obviously, we ask, you know, we can spend all night picking every little situation, but I think that was perfect, Jason.
Yeah, again, as you all go through it, I think it's an exciting town.
I would just like to clarify that as a private citizen outside of board meetings, I can say that I personally support the levy.
And you can say, yes, and you can say that you're a board member who supports the levy.
Okay.
Yeah, the only thing I can't have is, just, we don't run afoul of things, having three of you go to a meeting in front of Rotary.
Well, that would also break all sorts of other laws.
You pick up those different organizations you go in front of, and you show up in there with citizens hat and an individual speaking in behalf of what your position is, an individual board member. And then as a group, you all can discuss in here as well, that in favor of or opposition, the good and bad.
Two of us could go in any particular one, as long as it's not the only one.
Which, again, is very, very common, to kind of spread that message and spread that word of the importance.
You cleared that up, thank you.
System, so.
I did not, did not know that. I was given some false information, thank you, Jason.
But yeah, I wish you all the best.
Thank you, sir.
Very welcome.
Thank y'all.
Even though some of us has been through this many times before, it's always been great, because you never know when the law may have changed from the last go-rounds. It's good we have that. Okay, next up is crowdfunding. And this is basically a discussion item, there won't be any action, wanted to just get, kind of see where we are, and see people's, you know, opinions to the board's vote.
Well, I personally am thankful that this was brought to the board's attention, because when we were discussing this just 12 months ago, in Policy 6605, I understand that policies are written to be vague and to be interpreted in certain ways, but I was wondering if we could ask Ms. Carrion if she could clarify how fundraising is a part of crowdfunding? How can we, how can we separate, or how can we nest the two terms together in a legal manner?
So we actually just have a separate policy on crowdfunding.
Yes, so I have 6605, I also have 9700 in front of me as well.
So I don't think we really want to combine the two?
No, I'm not saying that, I'm asking, what is the difference between fundraising, right? If I'm selling candy bars?
Oh, and crowdfunding.
Or if I am using Booster or Cheddar Up and crowdfunding, right? Because our discussion last year was about Amazon wish lists for the classrooms, and the parents that have spoken to us over the past months are coming to us not to, how can I put it, not to ask permission to raise funds for wants or pretty things, but to provide experiences to our students. And we know that we come from a county that while we are, on average, one of the richest counties in the state, we do have, I don't even want to call it pockets of disparity, we have a lot of disparity across all our, all our schools, right? I love when I talk about Cheat Lake and people go, "Oh, that's where the rich people live." And I go, "Oh." My kids get on buses with kids that live in trailer parks, and we have to, and this is another thing that I don't understand, if this is applicable under there, I know lots of schools and lots of PTOs raise money for Christmas presents for students that don't get what they need. So is that permissible? If my kids are going to a school dance, and they're asking for donations to pick up Target gift cards for raffles and things like that, is it okay for people to use Cheddar Up for that? What is our concern, what is our bottom-line concern with using something like Booster or Get Moving or Cheddar Up?
So I don't think there needs to be a concern, it's the board's option if they want to choose to allow it or not. And the way the policy was written and adopted was that the board did not, and that was the wish of the board at that time.
Right.
And crowdfunding is defined in the policy as, you're using typically an internet-based system, and you're soliciting to a large group of individuals all at once, rather than selling candy bars to your friends, or something like that. So, you know, the board is the policymaking entity, it's the pleasure of the board whichever way you want to do it.
So I also have a question about Policy 9700, which is our relations with outside groups. Under E, the solicitation of funds, we, it says, "The Board of Education shall not permit any organization not related to the district solicit funds on district property." But underneath there, it also says, "This policy does not apply to the raising of funds for district-sponsored or school-sponsored activities." So do these two policies contradict each other?
So I don't know, I need to sit and digest them.
Yeah.
I mean, I haven't reviewed that policy in preparation for this, so that's an answer I'd have to get back to you on. I need to sit and actually read them together.
Okay, yeah, we just updated, and I recognize we passed 6605 or the previous members of this board in 2020, but we just revised the one, 9700, in May of this year. So I'm a little concerned about that. I do think that we are treading a line where our excess levy is so important to us. I think our excess levy is important to our county, it's important to our parents, it's important to our students and our teachers, and everyone involved in Mon County Schools. But I also know how much our students look forward to their field trips. And I know how many students, because I would have been one of those students, I would have been, I would have been one of those students that if my mom would have seen $25, she would have been like, "Mm, that's cute, I don't know if I can write that check." And so, to me, I would, I know that my own experiences with field trips and having school-supported field trips, and PTO-supported field trips, which I really do appreciate all the work that our PTO parents do, is essential to education, because you can't learn just out of a book. You can't just learn from a Chromebook. And so I think we have a responsibility, this is my own opinion, we have a responsibility to make sure that all of our students have access to all the educational experiences they possibly can.
Yeah, well said, Dr. Morgan. And I also want to echo that, to thank all the parents. Yeah, this has been going on behind the scenes, I'm not on Facebook, so a lot of people don't know, but my first meeting with a group of parents was not planned, and it was in the Blue Lot last year, the first W-1 football game. And I don't drink, so it was a sober meeting, they may have not been sober, I'm not quite sure, but that's when we really began to research and look into it, and want to do the right thing. This whole time, it's all been, it's been about the students, you got to be about the students, you got to follow state policy, and there's also district policies that we have control over, that we can, we can change. You know, and I do understand, I also did a lot of research a year ago when crowdfunding came up, and different judges' rulings way back in the day about keeping fair equality in different classrooms. You got one classroom with one parent that can buy a ton of stuff in the very same third grade over here, so I get it, I get the wish list thing, you got to be careful who owns property when it comes, I get all that. I, I do believe there's an opportunity for what the parent groups who have been here the last couple of months is separate. I think it is, I think it's separate, I think we know where the funds are going, I think there's a traceability there. I do understand that because of the way and the vagueness of the policy, it's like, whoa, then everything just falls under that, then we can't just use a third party. But I think we, as a board, can, can look at that and discuss that and say, you know, this can be separate, and whether it should be or not would be something we could vote on. But the opportunity for the kids, I'm a Brookhaven parent, and I too see the mix and the diverse group of kids that we have, and students that we have, and a lot of them never have the chance to go to the zoo, and a lot of them will never have the chance to go to the aquarium. And I also know what it's like for kids to not, because my whole neighborhood is full of kids, and I'm tired of buying popcorn, I'm tired of buying candy bars. But I think one of the-
No, you're not.
Okay, the candy bars, I like. But one of the things I think we have to keep in mind, too, and another, if it's positive or not, I think it is, but it's not just selling the stuff to the same people in the same area, and then when we have to go vote on a levy, we're like, well, I've already been given all this money. It's outside the county, you're getting people from all different states, like Kendra presented the data, where a lot of information, a lot of money's coming from different states, maybe different countries, there's relatives all over the place, there's relatives, you can't sell candy bars, too, because they'll melt by the time they get there. So I think that's a, that's a great, another fact I just wanted to make public and throw it out there, so I think separating and keeping, keeping it under a separate window, and then the crowdfunding thing can be with, with the wish lists and stuff, because there's a whole nother gamut of legal things when you start dealing with that, and I think, I think a separation, I can't say how I would vote, I don't think publicly, but a separation would be a good option to discuss.
You have anything, Dan?
No, I, I'm okay with outside money coming in, but we do have to, as, you know, Sean has stated, we got to keep track of it, we got to know what's coming in.
So many of these-
So many of these PTO organizations are registered nonprofit, they are registered nonprofit organizations under the state of West Virginia. They are audited. They choose to be audited and they are formally audited by the state. I am sure if we ask them, they would share that audit information with the district as well.
Yeah, and then also with that, the, the traceability of where the things are going, I think they even keep up with that, you know, with the money was spent on and they have to.
Oh, yeah, they have to.
As a 501(c), you have to, you have to have that information.
No one wants to be laundering money through the PTO.
No, we've heard stories.
Oh, I'm sure. I'm sure. So what would our next steps be? Because I'm new to this. If we were to vote to revise this policy, or would we rescind it and then write a new policy? How would it go?
No, you would give us the indication of which option you want on the policy. And the options were on the original board, and I can read the two options to you back when it was in July. I didn't realize those didn't carry forward, but.
That was from Neola, right? Not to interrupt you.
Yeah, they're Neola policies.
The one was to not change and then the other one, we do have, I'm sorry, Ms. Carradine. We do have a policy for fundraising for all the other boosters.
This isn't the fundraising policy. So this is the crowdsourcing policy. And that would be the one that would have to be changed. So what you would want to do is give an indication of which way the board is interested in going. I bring it back to you for first reading at the next board meeting. It's out for comment for 30 days and then it comes back for second reading and adoption.
I do want to say we have a policy for another fundraising for the boosters. And a very similar process could be good where, where Skyview, you're ready to begin fundraising for your, for your fun run or your dance. What do you do? You, you fill out the application. It goes to our superintendent. Our superintendent approves it and makes sure that it's, the process is what we've agreed on. Is that not correct?
It is. And Jennifer, just to, just for clarification, should the board decide that they wanted to permit crowdfunding, which is a valid option for you, it automatically defers the crowdfunding by definition to the fundraising policy. So crowdfunding then falls under all of the guidelines that are already currently in place for all other fundraising activities. So it, it would then defer and fall under the umbrella of all fundraising that we currently abide by.
And for each crowdfunding request, it still is subject to the approval of the superintendent or the board, whichever the board decides. I would assume you would want the superintendent because it's going to put every fundraiser on hold if you want to put them before the board.
I don't understand why there can't be a separation also as of the wishlist and those items in the PTO we're using.
I, I, I think the reason that there's not-
Because you got a group or you got an individual.
If you just, if you just look, and that, and that, it's addressed in the policy. It, it stipulates what you can use crowdfunding for. I would still have to approve those. But if you get that specific, we're going to be constantly revising the policy. I mean, just as an example, you have three or four probably different examples of crowdfunding platforms sitting in this room right now. And if you started having to break all of those out or break out what the superintendent approves and doesn't approve, we're going to be back in front of you continually adding and taking away specific sources. So it, it generalizes so that you don't have that issue. If you look at all your policies, they're very, they're not very specific because we don't want to have to keep coming back to the board every time something gets updated or something might change or a new crowdsourced platform comes into existence. So by putting it under the, the umbrella of all fundraising that currently exists, it will fall under all of those rules and guidelines. And they're much more specific than the, than the crowdfunding.
So we're specifically talking about policy 9211, school support organizations? That's the fundraising policy we're talking about? I just want to be clear.
Student fundraising.
5830?
5830.
Okay. Because I was looking at 9211 and it says here that all support organizations must be approved annually by the principal and the board. Does that mean PTOs who are independent organizations that are bonded and insured and nonprofit organizations through the state need to be approved in their association?
PTOs are not independent organizations. They are, they are connected to the Board of Edu-, they're what's called a related organization.
Even though they are independent nonprofit organizations that pay for their own bonding and insurance.
They are still what's called, and Nicole could speak to this more than I can because she deals with it all the time. They're related organizations under the umbrella of the Boards of Education.
There is no policy on PTOs. There's no policy on how the PTO is related to Mon County schools. And I find that very confusing and talking with other parents who are involved in the PTO over the past five to 10 years, it's never been clarified. So maybe we need to have something explicit that explains our relationship with them.
It's probably listed out in policy 8200, which is the financial policy for public schools in the entire state.
So is that a state one?
Not our policy, 8200. The state board's policy, 8200, the Department of Education. There's probably a definition for related organizations.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I was thinking it was in code or something.
And every related organization gets a packet from the finance department every year. And there is information in it that they are to return to Nicole's office. Whether they do it or not, I don't know. Again, I, I can't speak to that.
And that would come from Mon County schools or would that come from the individual school?
That comes from Mon County schools.
Okay. That's the first I'm hearing of that. Okay. I-
There is not an organization that raises money on behalf of anything that has to do with Mon County schools that doesn't fall under the umbrella of Montague County schools. There's no organization that's permitted to raise money and say that they're raising it for something connected to Mon County schools if it doesn't fall under that umbrella. It's not permissible.
I understand that, but it's also not accessible to the public. So even in our policy library and looking at the Mon County Schools website, there is no mention of the relationship between a PTO and an individual school or the PTO and Mon County schools.
They all get the information from our business office every year.
I think that should be public information. I think that should be public information about the relationship because I have gotten that question many times as this discussion has happened over the past 12 months. And so I, you know, I, I find it really interesting. I personally think that transparency is fantastic. I don't think we're hiding anything from anyone. So why not include that on Mon County Public Schools websites?
I guess, I don't see a problem with it, but I can't imagine there would be anyone who would think that a PTO operates independently of the school system. I, I can't comprehend that anyone would think that.
I didn't know.
So do you think anyone in the community can go raise money in the name of Montague County?
That's why I was looking for that information. I'm a researcher. I look for information. I ask questions. If I don't know, that's why I asked you this question today, so that it was clarified.
So the board can write a policy if you want to say, but I, it's somewhere in the business.
I didn't find it on the state web, the State Department of Education website. It is very, I, I feel like the policies that we have out there or, and I mean, I have questions about other policies that we're reviewing today where there's something on our public website and then something on our policy. And it doesn't, it doesn't fall in line with each other. And so to me, I think, I, I would love to see in addition to our school's website about PTOs, maybe we have a contact person. Is it Nicole? Great. Why don't we have that out there? Because when we're having this discussion about crowdfunding and multiple parents, groups of parents are coming to board members and saying, are we independent? Are we not independent? How does this go? There's something in the chain of command. I'm not blaming anyone anywhere. There's something in the chain of command or communication that is being lost that, that obviously needs clarification. I'm not scared to ask questions. I might be asking dumb questions. I really don't care. If I don't know, I'm going to ask. And I'm not going to assume that I know anything. So to me, I think transparency and clarification are worthwhile endeavors. And being able to clarify, again, who do PTOs report to? Do PTOs need to provide their auditing information to the district as well? I think those are good things to know. I think it builds better relationships with PTOs and us here in Saberton rather than just allowing them to, you know, not be, not be sure about what their relationship is with us on Earl Corr Road.
They should know because they get that information directly from our treasurer every year.
Okay.
They get all the information. They have to fill out information and provide it back to her.
Okay.
And every related organization within the school system is required to do that. So if a PTO is telling you they don't know that, then I, I, I question whether they're actually doing what they should be doing.
I mean, do we follow up with PTOs that don't file paperwork?
Yes.
Okay.
Because it is, Nicole is fiscally responsible for all the public funds and them as a related organization, those become part of the public funds. They're used specifically for those schools. But she is the steward of all the money that's collected in the name of Montague County schools. And I can tell you, she takes that job very seriously.
I have no question that Nicole takes her job very seriously. And I don't think I accused her at all of, of any misactivity.
But she does follow up. That's because she is responsible for that.
I'm here a few hours every week and that's why I'm asking what happens when I'm not here in those few hours every week. So do we make, make a motion to vote at a future meeting? What do we do?
No, because this is not an action item.
This is not an action item. It's information only. And so I'll add my two cents on the, the only thing, and I want to make sure which Jennifer has explained it, that we're in control of all of this. I don't, I don't want to get to that point where the money starts coming in from everybody, no matter where. And Nicole doesn't know that it's coming in. As far as the disparity, the trailer park comment, years ago, we used to do with Rotary, we did a luncheon for Christmas for underprivileged children. And they would bring them to a location. We'd serve lunch and they would leave with their presents in the bags. And that sounds like it was all warm and fuzzy and great, but then they were going back to the schools. And everybody in that school knew that they were underprivileged children because not all, because we allowed the teachers to. So that's my concern a little bit with all these different PTOs. Let's say you have one ABC school that has a real strong PTO and the kids are getting all this fundraising and are going everywhere. Then you have another school that's not as strong and they're not getting these trips and all. So I guess what I'm saying is we want to do all of this. We want to keep it all even for every student because I think every student deserves the same across the board. So that would be, you know, my comments on that, but I guess.
I think our school counselors do a very good job of not individualizing students to be recognized as underprivileged in these cases.
They do within our school, but I'm saying if you start hearing that such and so school is going on all these great trips and then they're looking at our school going, where are we going? What's up with that? I just want to make sure that it doesn't get lost in the sauce, to be fair across the board, or across the county, I should say. So I guess maybe ask for, put something together for maybe the. I know this, this sheet that you gave us, Jennifer, was great, which we actually postponed it because Dr. Campbell was not going to be at those two meetings. So that's the option one. Option two is something that, you know, kind of absorb it and see where, where everybody wants to be with it.
I'm, I'm making the assumption based on the conversation this evening that the board would like to look at reversing their previous decision from the previous board and looking at choosing the other option for this particular crowdfunding policy. In order for us to be able to do that, then I would bring back to you a revised crowdfunding policy for first reading. And we could do that for our next meeting.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. We could, we could dissect it at that point.
Next meeting would just be for first reading, correct? I'm only asking because I'll be absent. So I want to make sure there's no-
The next, the next meeting would be for, I would ask you for, we could skip the introduction. We've done introduction. We generally do an introduction and then we do first reading. We could skip the introduction since you've already reviewed it and just go to first reading. And that way it would go out upon your approval, should you approve it for first reading. It would go out for public comment for 30 days. At which point it would then come back to the board for a second reading and an adoption.
And we could make changes after the first reading's out because if the public has a different opinion of-
Yes, the only thing that I will continue to caution the board on is changing the language that has been given to us in relation to the two options. The, the language that's there, even though it's optional language, has been vetted by attorneys to make sure that it meets federal, state and state school board and the Department of Education policies. And so-
I appreciate that.
By taking the chance or by manipulating the language that is provided us, we are taking the chance that it would not hold up in court should it be challenged. And so that's the only caution that I would provide is that should the boards want to, to reverse their decision or the previous board's decision, that, that we just, we use the language that's presented to us in that. And I think it'll do what you're, I mean, it will do what I believe the board wants, which is to open up the option for PTOs to crowdfund. And that's ultimately what this discussion is about. And by reversing that policy, that would do that.
Okay. Thank you, Doc, for the explanation.
I, I just want to add one thing too. I know, Mike, we want everybody to be equal. It's not going to happen.
No, I understand that.
I, I don't want to see one group that's really active and raising money to be stifled because the other schools aren't.
And I didn't-
When I, when I taught, I mean, I couldn't tell you how many chocolate-covered pretzels, beach towels, cups I've sold. And the other score, that's when I was in university high and the work down against would say, well, yes, you're taking your kids to Washington DC. I mean, oh, I can't take them to Washington DC because you guys can't raise money to go to Washington DC. Now, I don't want to, I don't want to get into that. I mean, we all want it to be equal and fair. And the equal and fair is everybody has a chance to do this.
I'm not saying that we should penalize anybody.
Right, right.
I put that out there so that people can, and the other schools are going, okay, everybody needs to be on the same page.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty, moving on to appointment of the audit committee. I think, correct?
Yep.
Yes. Board members, typically every three years, we have to appoint an audit committee. Traditionally, that audit committee has been made up of the superintendent, a board member, who usually is the president, and our treasurer. So with that said, I would like to recommend that our audit committee be approved with the makeup of myself, Mr. Kelly, and our treasurer, Nicole Kemper.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Do we need to wait? There's only three of us in the room.
I noticed Mr. Marriott left, so we'll wait till he comes back. But we'll, I'll open up for discussion at this point, but he'll be back shortly. Which I will abstain obviously from voting.
Do you want to move on to the next?
No, because we need to vote on that too.
We could come back to that. Let me write that down though. You moved and then she seconded.
That's right.
Not much we can move on to. He's going to need to be here anyway for votes, so.
That's true. We can opt the monology. Actually, we're going to, we have to remove that, don't we?
The optomology?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, because they didn't get the paperwork back in time.
Well, if Dan quit. Well, if Dan quit, we'll be set up.
He voted with his feet.
There he goes.
Don't anybody stare at him when he comes in.
Dan, we were discussing the audit committee.
Understood.
So we just basically have to move in a second.
Correct.
Into the discussion phase, if you have any comments about that.
No, I don't have any.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Next is the Sundale affiliation agreement.
Board members, this is a new contract. We've actually had an agreement, or we've had a, a relationship with Sundale and M-Tech for many years now. It's just never been formalized or hasn't been re-formalized in a long time. So, um, we're putting that before you this evening. Superintendent recommends that the board approve the Sundale affiliation agreement as presented to you in your executive content.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion, all of them. The only thing, just a typo, I'm sure, but the agreement was September 1st of 2024 to 2025. It just needs to be 25 to 26, but...
Yes.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. And we are removing the WVU Item B on the new contracts.
We'll bring that back to you.
Bring it back, right.
When they get it back to us.
Waiting on some paperwork finalized. Next, we have the consent agenda. You can along when you're doing it.
Uh, a little bit.
Didn't use all the alphabet, though.
Try that, too. See if I can get there. All right, Superintendent recommends that the board approve the consent agenda as presented this evening to include: Item A, expenditures exceeding $3,000. Item B, the payment of salaries and accounts payable. Item C, field experiences. Item D, the Burlington UMFS renewal. Item E is the Best Life Speech Therapy MOU. Item F, the Best Life Therapy Occupational Therapy MOU. Item G, the College Board PSAT Agreement. Item H, the City of Morgantown SRO MOU for Morgantown High School. Item I, the City of Morgantown PRO MOU for Suncrest Middle School. Item J is the Fairmont State University MOU. Item K is Architomatics MOU. Item L is the Shack MOU. Item M is the Source MOU. Item N is the United Summit Center Incorporated MOU. Item O is the Visiting Homemakers MOU. Item P is the WVU CSD Speech Pathology and Audiology MOU. And Q are the minutes of your July 22nd, 2025 meeting.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, follow-ups? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Now Jennifer gets to go to work.
Actually, I got to do all the work.
She's already did the work.
She's already done all the work, yeah.
Policies for first reading.
These policies are for first reading this evening. And upon your approval, we'll go out for public comment for 30 days. So I will read, I'll just read through the policies and we'll take one motion then. First is Item A, Policy 2266, Non-Discrimination on the Basis of Sex in Education Programs or Activities. This is a revised policy. And again, just as a reminder, board members, there's an explanation of any changes in your executive content for you to review, and I'm sure that you have. Item B is Policy 2340, Field, Co-Curricular, and Other Extracurricular County Sponsored Trips. This is a revised policy. Item C is Policy 2413, AIDS Education Program. That is a revised policy. Item D is Policy 3160.01, Tuberculosis Examination. That is a revised policy. Item E is Policy 4160.01, Tuberculosis Examination. That is also a revised policy. Item F is Policy 5112, Entrance Requirements. That is a revised policy. Item G is Policy 5310, Health Services. That is a revised policy. Item H is Policy 5320, Immunization. That is a revised policy. Item I is Policy 5321, Tuberculin Skin Test. That is a revised policy. Item J is Policy 5460, Graduation Requirements. That is a revised policy. Item K is Policy 5505, Academic Honesty. That is a new policy. Item L is Policy 5511, Dress and Appearance. That is a revised policy. Item M is Policy 5600, Student Discipline. That is a revised policy. Item N is Policy 6151, Bad Checks. That is a revised policy. Item O is Policy 6320, Purchases. There's a technical correction in that policy. Item P is Policy 7440.05, Smart Monitoring Equipment. That is a new policy. Item Q is Policy 7455, Accounting System for Capital Assets. There's a technical correction in that policy. Item R is Policy 7540.03, Student Technology, Acceptable Use and Safety. That is a revised policy. Item S is Policy 7540.04, Staff Technology, Acceptable Use and Safety. That is a revised policy. Item T is Policy 8330, Student Records. That is a revised policy. Item U is Policy 8390, Animals on School Property. That is a revised policy. Item V is Policy 8450, Control of Casual Contact Communicable Diseases. That is a revised policy. Item W is Policy 8453, Control of Non-Casual Contact Communicable Diseases. That is also a revised policy. And finally, Item X is Policy 8640, Transportation for Curricular, Co-Curricular, and Extracurricular County Sponsored Trips. This policy is being rescinded.
Causes covered elsewhere.
Do you want to get a motion in a second?
Well, I was just, yeah. Pushed that button and it disappeared on me.
That's all right.
Okay, do I have a, a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Now it's over for discussion, I can ask my question. That was, X is the one that I was...
Yeah, it's you, I think it's being addressed in Policy 2034.
That's what I thought it was.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yep, I have a few. Um, on Policy 5511, Dress and Appearance, I'm a little confused because on the county website, I looked at our dress code, and it says Policy 4373, which is not included in our library anymore. So, but it's dated, uh, the policy that is being revised was dated 2020. The dress code that is on our website is effective 2223. So which is it?
I don't have, I don't put this stuff on the website, so I don't know.
I know. I'm just curious because there's actually like a drawing that tells you what you can wear and what you can't wear. And this is what parents see versus the policy that's in our library. So I'm just wondering, what are we supposed to be paying attention to? Because as a parent, this is what I see.
We put that together, what, two years ago, Donna?
22 or 23.
It was more, it's not necessarily a policy. It's an administrative guideline.
But this is, this is under the state policy for student...
So it's not Mon County. I would not find this in our, okay, again, we need, but it says Mon County Schools.
And it, and it does, and this is a take from the state policy 4373. So I understand you're right. You would naturally maybe think it's Mon County's policy. But this is, this is part of what we do to comply with Policy 4373. And it was put together as a set of protocols for parents, just like you said.
So these, these don't necessarily overlap?
And that is probably true. I don't have that, the other one in front of me. This is a take on, generally speaking, what we expect for our students. And again, it was put together two years ago to try and help clarify for families and schools what is permissible and what isn't. Again, to be compliant with state policy 4373, which is our student conduct policy.
That, the state student conduct policy?
The state, the state, yes.
Okay, again, I really would love clarification on that. Because as a board member, if I'm reading these policies, and I don't understand it, a parent's not going to understand it. As a parent, I don't understand the difference between the two. Um, I have a few questions about it. Specifically, in relation to, again, the, the vagueness of some of these policies. Who decides what is appropriate and what is not? Because inappropriate fashion, not specifically covered in the above guidelines, shall be addressed by the site administrator designated. So who's the site administrator?
The principal.
The principal? And we leave a, do we have, other than this picture, do we have, uh, do we have, do we train our principals on what is appropriate and what is not appropriate? And I, this line of questioning is important because, uh, I, I personally believe, and there's lots of research on there, that we literally sexualize children and young women when we include dress codes. And we make them self-conscious about their bodies and their own sexuality. So I have, I, I don't like any vagueness. I don't like vagueness.
And let me just say a hundred percent, I agree with you. We have done that exact training because part of the issue is most dress codes were impactful for young females. And so several years ago, we've gone through a training. We haven't done one recently, but we had trainings on that very issue because that's where nationwide, there was a problem with that. And we recognized it here as well. So yes, it is left to the administration with guidance here. So in other words, if there are any issues, then they, they would be, the principal would call this office. And either Adam Hinkins, who oversees the student code of conduct policies, which is the state board policy 4373, which guides all of our levels of where students' behavior falls, whether it could be something as simple as disrespect or something very serious, and that would be having drugs or weapons. So that's, those are all outlined in that policy. Now, dress code is just a piece of that, but that's why dress code is very, very difficult for anyone to enforce, because everyone has their personal biases or understandings. So we try to, yes, be as uniform as possible with that. And I believe strongly that we have done a lot in making sure we are not using the dress code policy that does impact young females in a negative way. So that is something that's very important. And, and we agree wholeheartedly.
Okay, I also have some comments on the AI policies that we've revised. I'm, I have questions about all of these. Policy 5505, do we have a previous policy on academic honesty or dishonesty?
No.
No.
This is new.
Okay, so, uh, I probably have questions about all of these. They're very similar. What are we talking to teachers about over the next week that they need to teach their students regarding plagiarism, regarding academic dishonesty at all levels, at the elementary, middle, and high school levels?
And it is very different at the elementary level than it is at the high school level. And actually, our ed techs and under our tech policies and what our ed techs do, we've been actually working on this for a few years. Now, I would suggest that there's always more work to do. The more and more that AI becomes such an issue at the forefront, the more impactful it is. Now, our stance as the school system administration office is that we do incorporate for our teachers, AI for our students, AI, the use of all of this, but within the boundaries that we've stipulated. So we do have, we have provided training. We have modules under the Safe Schools, uh, modules that we train our students in. So what is, what is AI, how it's to be used, and how plagiarism is impactful? Our School Connect, uh, program, which is just high school, works with, with, uh, actual scenarios and ways to, for, for our teachers to learn about AI and then our students to learn about that as well. So there, there are a myriad of ways that it's shared with our teachers and our students.
Okay. I'm going to skip to the other AI policy, one that we have. I'm sorry. A little, I printed out downstairs and I don't have everything in order. So again, regarding the Student Technology 7540.03, how are we supporting our teachers? Because I think, I think in talking with parents and teachers, there is the complete, what I'd get rid of everything, no, no computers in the classroom. And then there's the, this is a part of our world, we need to, to understand that. So, um, I guess, as an educator myself at a institution that does not have a very, that does not have a policy regarding AI, um, and it's not very clear, are there benefits to teachers choosing their own path, which is what the policy allows them to do?
That's, I, I don't want to speak on behalf of everything here. It's, it's a very philosophical piece when you get into that, because you have very different groups of thought. Now, we have tried to bridge that gap with our staff. And we, we absolutely are saying, yes, it's a part of what the future is, and we need to learn about it. We need to use it correctly with our students and our staff. And I know our teachers are very concerned about making sure that it doesn't replace human thought.
Yes.
Which we're all, we all are wary of. So I think this is ever-evolving, and I, I do think the policy is vague, as I've heard Dr. Campbell speak, too, because it, it's about the legal pieces. So the parameters of it are very, very broad. It is up to us to do within, to make sure our teachers are supported and the students are trained on all of this. Because it is, we're stepping into the future here very quickly. And honestly, I feel like it changes almost weekly.
Yeah. I, I agree. I remember when ChatGPT came online, and, and it was in November of a year. And I had to have this discussion with my, my adult students. I can't imagine what it's like in classroom with like eight-year-olds. I also will bring a, a policy, it's a new policy, 7440.05, the smart monitoring equipment. I know we had a discussion about this, but has the district purchased this equipment?
We have vape detectors in our, in our restrooms, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, that's, that's why I wanted to clarify. But we didn't have a policy on it prior to that.
We did not.
Okay.
And that this addresses the fact that we do have them.
Okay. Policy 8453, Cleveland Clinic, the CDC, the World Health Organization, all prefer the term sexually transmitted infections when we're talking about AIDS, when we're talking about Hep A, B, C, any HIV. I think that we should change our wording on this, too. It's actually a more correct medical term, as well as less stigmatizing. So I encourage us to remove the use of disease and instead use infection. I also am understanding why we are revising Policy 2266, which is our Title IX policy. I'm very disappointed that we have to do this. We're not protecting trans students, and I think our public should be aware of what these changes involve. And we are going back to this biological idea that there are two categories, male and female. And so for our students who do not identify as either of those categories, please pay attention to what is going on and protect yourself.
Any other comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay, let's do the hand vote, to be clear. Mr. Schmidt, for the ayes?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And for the nays?
Nope.
One. Okay. All right, motion carries. Next, we have personnel matters.
Just as a reminder, those policies will be released, I believe, tomorrow for public comment for thirty days, and they'll be available for the public to look at and make comments that we will bring back to the board before their adoption. So we are down to personnel matters. I don't have any changes for the regular personnel list. With that said, Superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list as presented.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, follow-ups, questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Evidently, we have no new positions.
We do not.
So we have personnel list addendum.
Superintendent recommends that the board approve the personnel list addendum as presented to you this evening.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any questions, follow-ups? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion carries. Board member updates.
Fall sports have started, so all those little ones running around trying to make teams right now, I'll be honest, breaks my heart for, but it is what it is, right? Some make teams, some don't. But as we get ready, I think bus drivers and teachers and others report tomorrow. I do have some plans to meet with some different community members, brand over our kids and our, and our schools and throughout the week. So, safety first, keep our kids safe and.
I agree.
We can't teach them a thing safe.
Anybody else?
I have two things. Number one, not only am I excited for the first day of school, like Mr. Smith over there, not because I'm getting rid of my kids, but I'm really excited to be celebrating the 100th year of UHS. I think that's a real accomplishment, and I think that's something that I'm excited to see, the different programming and stuff that they do over the years. So we're celebrating UHS. I also had the pleasure of joining our principals and our vice principals, assistant principals, at their training in Western, I guess that's where we were, a few weeks ago. I was able to sit in on a presentation their first morning, and we got a lot of really great questions and a lot of, like, I just loved the energy in the room. The energy in the room was so fantastic. And so I think that, you know, I had a lot of questions about why we were spending money on speakers, and I was impressed, I was really impressed. So thank you for the invitation, thank you for allowing me to join.
I have none. Sean took mine. More teachers, have a great school year, bus drivers, cooks, janitors, custodians, everybody, principals, another great year.
Always like this time of year, because in my opinion, it gets back to normal. Everybody's everywhere. Okay, our next board meeting is August 26th. If there's anything else, adjourned.
Thank you, board member.
Thank you.